It is now cold order. Today is August twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five. To start with our regular session this afternoon, we'll have a prayer. And this will be followed by the national anthem. And next is the singing of the Southern Lady hymn. This will be followed by the singing of the So Good hymn. And the PCL Creed recitation will be led by the honorable Elyseu Filenar. Start with a prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with a humble heart, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we begin this regular session. Lord, we ask that you would bless every person who is gathered here today, and that you would be present with us in a special way. We pray that this session would be a time of learning, growth, and fellowship for all of us. Help us to listen to one another with open hearts and open minds, and to support one another as we strive to serve you in all that we do. Please give us the strength and the courage to follow your will, and to use the gifts and talents you have given us to make a positive difference in the world. We pray all of this in your holy name, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
So good, oh so good, my swag on the long road. Ang gabi milbon mo sa masahulawan, gani ato karunhang tut sa kahanguran. Ikaw hingpit nga inspirasyon sa talang sunod mo. Ipasaas na mo ang imong bandila, sa kanunay panalipkan ka. So good, oh so good, ang gabi na langgang lungso. Sa katalek manut pagsulay, ikaw malipon sa kanunay. So good, oh so good, my swag on the long road. So good, oh so good, mira ang lahat lungso.
Councilors, please raise your right hand for our councilor's creed. I am a Philippine Consular, mandated by lot of missionaries, and ordained sister to down the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service of self as the guiding principle of my official acts. And as I read, depart with the local legislation. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and to the Philippine people.
Mabuhay ang PCL!
Again, good afternoon. We are on the item number nine on the order business. Would be the roll call of the members of the Sanggunian Bayan. Madam Secretary, please.
Honorable Jose Ramil G. Golo.
Present.
Honorable Rhett Anthony T. Gabronino.
Present.
Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma. Honorable Rufus Iolo in official travel. Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior. Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas. Honorable Igardo C. Atwill.
Present.
Honorable Elyseu D. Filenar.
Present.
Honorable Alna S. Dejarme on official travel. Honorable Levy Galdo, he's also on official travel. And Honorable Roves Toward Lorremia.
Present.
Three of the members are not around, Mr. Chairman.
With the... Only three of the members are not around, and they are all under official business. There appears to have a quorum, so we can proceed with the regular session this afternoon. Next would be the reading of the minutes of the previous session and for approval of the same. Madam Secretary, please.
Honorable Chairman.
Honorable... Honorable Lorremia is recognized.
Hello. Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Good afternoon. Considering that we started almost 3:00 PM, I would like to dispense the reading of the previous minutes only the legislative action. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
And besides the minutes of the previous session, we're already emailed through our official email addresses. So there is a motion of Honorable Lorremia to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session. Anybody to second the motion? Motion seconded by Honorable Villia, we have Honorable Atwill, Filenar, and Gabronino. Questions? Clarification? Objection? The chair hears none. The motion is served by approved. The secretary is served by requested to dispense the reading of the minutes and to read directly the legislative actions passed during the last regular session, please.
The following were the resolutions issued. A resolution declaring Resolution Number Sixteen, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of Barangay Libas SK. A resolution approving the supplemental budget number one for fiscal year 2025 for Sangunian Kabataan, Barangay Libas, So Good Southern Later, in the amount of 10,000 pesos only operative in its entirety. It was moved by Honorable Roves Toward M. Lorremia and jointly seconded by Honorable Casil Senior, Galdo, Gabronino, Filenar, Villia Wilma, and Atwill. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of catering services to be tendered during the Training on Student Leadership Convergence 2025, empowering youth leaders through advocacy, transparency, and climate action in the amount of 70,000 pesos on August thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, chargeable against youth capacity building and trainings budget under their local youth development office. It was moved by Honorable Roves Toward M. Lorremia and jointly seconded by Honorable Filenar, Atwill, Paranas, Gabronino, Galdo, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of snack standard during the Salikabataan Youth Organization Meeting on July twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, and August sixth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of 10,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Rhett Anthony T. Gabronino and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of snack standard during the meeting with job orders regarding duties, functions, and responsibilities on July twenty-one and twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, at Municipal Conference Hall in the amount of 18,275 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Levy T. Galdo and jointly seconded by Honorable Villia Wilma, Lorremia, Atwill, Filenar, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of expense standard during the Forty-Seventh National Disability Rights Week Celebration on July eighteen, twenty-twenty-five, at Barangay Rizal Gym So Good in the amount of 77,220 pesos, chargeable against Person with Disabilities Program under MOE of MSWD Office. It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of snack standard during the Pag sugat sa Philippine Looper sa So Good Southern Later on July nineteen, twenty-twenty-five, at Municipal Conference Hall So Good in the amount of 17,500 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing the Honorable Sheffred Lino Estan in his capacity as municipal mayor of the LGO of So Good Southern Later to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture with Principal Office Address at Canhurao Hills, Tacloban City, as herein represented by Regional Executive Director Andrew Rodolfo Arais regarding construction of a cold storage facility. It was moved by Honorable Alberto Casil Senior and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution earnestly requesting the office of the municipal mayor to mobilize personnel from the So Good Traffic Management Group, STMG, to maintain the free flow of traffic and avoid congestion along the Goi Street Zone One from eight to twelve noon and at the intersection of Rizal Street and Bagare Street Zone Four on weekdays. It was moved by Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing Honorable Sheffred Lino Estan in his capacity as municipal mayor of the LGO of So Good Southern Later to sign and enter into a data turnover statistics authority with office address at PSA Complex, East Avenue, Quezon City, as represented herein by its Undersecretary, National Statistician, and Civil Judge General, Claire Dennis Esmapa, PSD, regarding turnover of 2024 CBMS data in electronic format. It was moved by Honorable Rhett Anthony unanimously seconded by all members. A resolution authorizing the Honorable Sheffred Lino Estan in his capacity as municipal mayor of the LGO of So Good Southern Later to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the municipality of Tomas Opot as herein by the Honorable C. Pano, municipal mayor, regarding twinning relationship to foster mutual assistance and cooperation. It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution adapting the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council Resolution Number Four, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five. A resolution approving the Supplemental Plan of the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund Investment Plan, Twenty-Twenty-Five. It was moved by Honorable Elyseu D. Filenar and jointly seconded by Honorable Atwill, Paranas, Lorremia, Gabronino Galdo, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution adapting the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council Resolution Number Five, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five. A resolution approving the realignment of funds in the amount of 2 million pesos from the construction of flood mitigation structures, river dikes, disaster resilient seawalls, and their disaster mitigation and prevention to the construction of slope protection and other disaster mitigation related structures, and 150,000 pesos from the conduct of training on mental health and psychosocial support under disaster preparedness. It was moved by to the conduct of public service continuity planning. It was moved by Honorable Igardo C. Atwill and jointly seconded by Honorable Paranas, Filenar, Villia Wilma, Gabronino, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution adapting the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council Resolution Number Six, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five. A resolution approving the realignment of funds in the total amount of 75,500 pesos for the participation to rescue jamboree 2025, provincial and regional, chargeable against the seventy percent portion of the five percent local disaster risk reduction and management fund under disaster preparedness. It was moved by Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution authorizing payment of catering service to be tendered during the Multi-Sectoral Forest Protection Committee Meeting on August nineteen, twenty-twenty-five, at Municipal Conference Hall in the amount of 17,500 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Elyseu D. Filenar and jointly seconded by Honorable Paranas, Atwill, Villia Wilma, Galdo, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Senator Loren Legarda for financial assistance in the form of medical assistance to endangered and financially incapacitated patients Maipif program in favor of the municipality of So Good Southern Later. It was moved by Honorable Roves Toward M. Lorremia and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. The same tenor, but addressed to the Honorable Senator Rafiti Tolfo, as moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Win Gachalian for the same request, as moved by Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Mark A. Verliar, the same tenor as moved by Honorable Levy T. Galdo and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Alan Peter S. Cayutano with the same tenor as moved by the Honorable Rhett Anthony T. Gabronino and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel Migso Biri, the same tenor as moved by Honorable Krishna Villia Wilma and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Joseph Victor J. V. G. Ehersito for the same financial assistance request, as moved by the Honorable Igardo C. Atwill and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Risa Antiveros for the same financial assistance request, as moved by the Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Jingo Ehersito Estrada for the same request, as moved by the Honorable Roves Toward M. Lorremia and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Bam Aquino for the same financial assistance request, as moved by the Honorable Elyseu D. Filenar and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. A resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Erwin T. Tolfo for the same financial assistance for Maipif, as moved by the Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Francis K. Kopangilinan for the same request, financial assistance for the Maipif, as moved by the Honorable Levy T. Galdo and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Same tenor of the resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Rodante D. Marcoletta as moved by the Honorable Rhett Anthony T. Gabronino and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Panphiluping M. Laxson as moved by the Honorable Elyseu D. Filenar and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Now the resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Vicente C. Soto III for financial assistance for Maipif, as moved by the Honorable Roves Toward M. Lorremia and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. Another resolution addressed to the Honorable Senator Manuel Lito M. Lapid for financial assistance in the form of Maipif, as moved by the Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was approved. A resolution for the adoption and approval of the report of the public hearings spearheaded by the Committee on Social Services held on August seventh, twenty-twenty-five, at Barangay Rizal Courtyard for the following proposed ordinances. Number one, ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash three four seven entitled, "An Ordinance Prohibiting Online Sexual Abuse and Exploitation of Children and Child Sexual Abuse and Exploitation of Materials in the municipality of So Good Southern Later, Institutionalizing Programs for Its Prevention and Eradication and Providing Penalties Thereof; thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof." Second, an ordinance number twenty-five dash three five zero entitled, "An Ordinance Mandating Random Drug Testing of More or Less Ten Employees in All Establishments in the municipality of So Good Southern Later, and establishing the same as a requirement in the acquisition and renewal of business permits." And the third, ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash three five one, "An Ordinance Mandating All Fast Food Corporations and Other Establishments to Provide Temporary Employment to Qualified Senior Citizens, Differently Able Persons, or PWD Residents of the municipality of So Good Southern Later." It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and jointly seconded by Honorable Villia Wilma, Lorremia, Gabronino Galdo... Lo... Duong Galdo. It was approved. A resolution approving in the second reading the proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash three four seven entitled, "An Ordinance Prohibiting Online Sexual Abuse and Exploitation of Children and Child Sexual Abuse and Exploitation of Materials in the municipality of So Good Southern Later, Institutionalizing Programs for Its Prevention and Eradication and Providing Penalties Thereof; thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof." It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sangunian Bayan present. It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. A resolution approving in the second reading the proposed ordinance number 2025-350, entitled, "An Ordinance Mandating Random Drug Test- Testing of More or Less 10 Employees in All Establishments in the Municipality of Sogud Southern Later," and establishing the same as a requirement in the acquisition and renewal of business permits. It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. A resolution approving in the second reading the proposed ordinance number 2025-351, an ordinance mandating all fast food corporations and other establishments to provide temporary employment to qualified senior citizens, differently abled persons or PWD resident residents of the municipality of Sogud Southern later. It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. A resolution granting financial assistance to the Sangüenian Cabataan Cluster 8 through Honorable Mark Vincent L. Arnaiz, SK Chairperson of Barangay Constelación Sogud Southern later, in the amount of 5,000 pesos for the purchase of basketball uniforms for their upcoming Sangüenian Cabataan Federation Basketball League, chargeable against donations under MOE of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Roost Award M. Loremia and unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Senator Camille A. Villia, Villiar for financial assistance in the form of medical assistance to indigent and financially incapacitated patients Maifif program in favor of the municipality of Sogud Southern later. It was moved by Honorable Roslyn O. Paranas and unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. That is subject for correction for the surname. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Senator P. S. Cayutano for the financial assistance in the form of medical assistance to indigent financially incapacitated patients program in favor of the municipality of Sogud Southern later. It was moved by Honorable Kris Navilia Wilma and unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Senator Francis Chis G. Escudero for financial assistance in the form of Maifif program in favor of the municipality of Sogud Southern later. It was moved by Honorable Rhett Antoni Gabronino, unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Senator Joel Villanueva for financial assistance in the form of Maifif program in favor of the municipality of Sogud Southern later. It was moved by Honorable Leviti Galdo, unanimous and seconded by all members of the Sangüenian Bayan present, it was approved. Those were all legislative actions taken up as of the previous regular session. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, everyone, you heard the legislative actions passed during the last regular session. Anybody like to make corrections or, uh, rectifications being read by our secretary? The Honorable Filenar is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, Madam Secretary, please flashback 108 resolution. Regarding the address of Barangay Rizal Jim Sogud, uh, no need to, no need to complete, Honorable Chairman, the address. Barangay Rizal Sogud, Deli Walanang Solidity.
Okay, we can, we can accommodate your request, Honorable Filenar.
Uh, and 133, Resolution Number 133.
And what, what, uh, number is that?
133. 133, Resolution Number 133.
133.
Please, Secretary.
Yes, Honorable Filenar. Uh, Honorable Villiar, not Honorable Villia.
Honorable Villiar, Villia. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, thank you for your, uh, observation, Honorable Filenar, so that, uh, we can, uh, make corrections to the minutes or the, the legislative, this legislation that you have passed during the last, uh, session that we had. Okay, any other corrections before we will approve the minutes? Anybody, if none, Honorable Gabrino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. Uh, given that there's no more question or clarification, Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption and approval of the previous minutes of the regular session of Sangüenian Bayan Sogud. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Gabrino. There is a motion for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the previous session, including the legislative actions passed during the last, uh, session. Anybody to second the motion? Seconded by Honorable Villia Atwill, we have Honorable Filenar, uh, Loremia and Casil Senior. Questions, clarification, objection, the chair hears none, the motion is reserved by carried and approved. Number item, item number 11, under the order of business, is that it, any matters for discussion arising from the minutes of the previous session? Uh, there is no discussion. Uh, let's proceed with our visitors' hour. The, uh, aisles are here, uh. Uh, there's no visitors' hour today. Uh, there are no visitors this, uh, afternoon. Okay. For the privilege hour, anybody would like to enjoy their privileges this, this afternoon? The Honorable Gabrino is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to earmark one resolution, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Gabrino, for, any, Honorable Villia is recognized. Uh, your microphone.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Chairman. I would like to earmark, um, two ordinances, one resolution and one committee report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Villia had earmarked two ordinances, one resolution and one committee report. Next, Honorable Paranas is recognized.
I would like to earmark, Honorable Chairman, uh, one resolution. Two resolutions, Honorable Chairman, and one, um, topic for discussion, Honorable Chairman.
For other matters, one discussion and two resolution for Honorable Paranas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Paranas. Any other, uh, councilors? Honorable Casil Senior?
Uh, report, the post activity report during the, the seminar last. Sa si bossa during the seminar sa budget preparation, Mr. Chairman.
Uh. Okay. Okay, so, uh, we will, uh, cater the, uh, request of the Honorable, um, Honorable Casil Senior. Oh, there is still one.
Resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, how many barangays? Only one barangay?
Only one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, one. One, this is one resolution for Honorable, uh, Casil. And one, uh, is that a post activity report?
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, one post activity report of the Honorable Casil. Any others? If, uh, none, uh, we will proceed with, uh, reading and references to the corresponding committees of the following. Literally under ordinances, we will, uh, cater the two ordinances of the Honorable Kris Navilia during the business of the day. Resolutions, we will also pass resolutions as per earmark during the privilege hour. Uh, petition, we have no petition submitted today. Communication, we will also, uh, refer the application for accreditation of the following for the Cabasco Aggregators Association Incorporated and another association, the LP Association of the Physicist Fox Seaside Wheelers, and another association, South Pacific Integrated Area Development Foundation Incorporated, RSPADF, and the last would be Ruasa Rural Water Works and Sanitation Association Incorporated. And number 15 on the order calendar of business. Oh, yeah, the, we will, uh, refer this application for accreditation of the following, as I have, uh, read earlier, the four associations who are applying for accreditation to the proper committee, which is the Committee on Accreditation, which is, uh, under Honorable, uh, I think Honorable Olo is the chairman of the Committee on Accreditation. And the vice chairman of Honorable, uh, Olo is the vice chairman. Um, Honorable Casil Senior. So, we will, uh, refer this, considering that Honorable Olo is on official, uh, business, we will refer to Honorable Casil, the vice chairman, the application of accreditation of these four, uh, association. And you might just as well inform Honorable Olo of the conduct of the committee. It is will undergo committee meeting, uh, Madam Secretary, right? We will, uh, the Honorable Olo will conduct a committee meetings of these associations, uh, Honorable Casil.
Um, maybe, Chairman, we, we will call before our, prepare a schedule, we will call also the Honorable Olo, okay? Basically, ma conflict yang one by schedule.
Okay. So, in the meantime, Honorable Casil, this, uh, this application, uh, will be, uh, referred to you as the vice chairman, but, uh, the scheduling of the meeting will be just done later on if Honorable Olo, uh, will have his own schedule of, uh, these, uh, committee meetings. Okay, so just inform the secretariat, when would be the available date for Honorable Olo? Okay. Okay, thank you, Honorable.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will call Honorable Olo to schedule his one, uh, committee meeting. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
You, Honorable, uh, Casil Senior. So, we're through with the communication and, uh, let's have the calendar of business for today, and if there's business, we have none. For business of the day, we have, uh, ordinances, we will cater the... Okay, we will cater first the ordinances of the Honorable Paranas. We have ordinances on the following, uh, for the third and final, final reading of the following municipal ordinances. Ordinance number one is ordinance number 2025-347. This is entitled, "An Ordinance Prohibiting the Online Sexual Abuse or Exploitation of Children or Osaic and Child Sexual Abuse or Exploitation Materials Si Saem" in the municipality of Sogud Southern later, and institutionalizing the programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof, thereafter establishing supportive environment for the child victims and providing funds thereof. Please, Honorable Paranas, for the third and final reading of this ordinance.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, thank you for the honor and privilege. For the third and final reading, ordinance number 2025-347, entitled, "An Ordinance Prohibiting Online Sexual Abuse or Exploitation of Children Osaic and Child Sexual Abuse or Exploitation Materials Si Saem" in the municipality of Sogud Southern later, institutionalizing programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof, thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Paranas. You've heard, Honorable Paranas, for the third and final reading of the municipal ordinance, uh, with number 2, uh, 2025-347. Any, uh, body to, or any secondaire to the motion of Honorable Paranas? Um, Honorable Gabrino and Honorable Filenar seconded to the motion, and likewise, Honorable Atwill also, uh, seconded. Likewise, Honorable Casil Senior. Is, uh, any, uh, questions? Questions, clarification, objection, the chair hears none. The third and final reading of ordinance number 2025-347, entitled, "An Ordinance Prohibiting Online Sexual Abuse or Exploitation of Children Osaic and Child Sexual Abuse or Exploitation Materials Si Saem" in the municipality of Sogud Solidity, and institutionalizing the program for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof, thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof, is now, uh, carried and approved. Let's, uh, go, uh, let's proceed with ordinance, the second ordinance, Honorable Paranas. This is ordinance number 2025. Uh, 2025-350, this is entitled, "An Ordinance Mandating Random Drug Testing of More or Less, uh, 10 Employees in All Establishments in the Municipality of Sogud Southern Later" and establishing the same as a requirement in the acquisition and renewal of the business permits. You have the floor, Honorable Paranas.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move for the third and final reading on the ordinance number 2025-350, entitled, "An Ordinance Mandating Random Drug Testing of More or Less 10 Employees in All Establishments in the Municipality of Sogud Southern Later" and establishing the same as a requirement in the acquisition and renewal of business permits. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
There's a motion of Honorable Paranas for the third, for the passes of ordinance number 2025-350 for the third and final reading. Anybody to second the same motion? Seconded by Honorels Villia, Honorable Loremia, Honorable Filenar and Honorable Honorable Finar, and Honorable Gabirino, Honorable Atwill. Questions? Clarification? Objection? The chair has none. The motion is served by carried and approved. To, for, again, for the third and final reading of another ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-three-five-one, an ordinance mandating all fast food corporations and other establishments to provide temporary employment to qualified senior citizens, differently-abled persons or PWD who are residents of municipality of Sugod Southern Lady. Uh, please, Honorable Paranas, for the passage.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move for the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-three-five-one, an ordinance mandating all fast foods, fa- fast food corporations and other establishments to provide temporary employment to qualified senior citizens, differently-abled persons or PWD residents of the municipality of Sugod Southern Lady. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Paranas. There's a motion for the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash, uh, three-five-one as read by the sponsor of the ordinance. Anybody to second the said motion? Motion seconded by Honorable Villia unanimously approved and seconded by all the members present in this regular session. This, uh, motion is served by, uh, mo-, uh, carried and approved. Unanimously carried and approved by all the members present. We're through with the three ordinances passed for the third and final reading. We have two ordinances earmarked by Honorable Villia. Uh, during the privilege hour, Honorable Villia, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, go ahead, Honorable Villia.
Thank you. Um, I would like to propose two ordinances for first reading. Um, an ordinance amending municipal ordinance number twenty-twenty-dash-one-six-five on the provision setting the schedule for loading and unloading cargoes for trucks carrying three tons and up of cargoes. The second one will be an ordinance amending a provision to ordinance two-zero-six.
Uh, excuse me, Honorable Villia, we will take it one, one by one, okay? So there's, um, uh, ordinance number, uh, this is an ordinance, uh, proposed by Honorable Villia. This is entitled an ordinance amending municipal ordinance number twenty-twenty-dash-one-six-five on the provisions setting the schedule for the loading and unloading cargoes for trucks carrying three tons and up of the cargoes is now considered on the first reading. Okay, then, uh, the next, uh, ordinance, please.
An ordinance amending a provision to ordinance two-zero-six-dash-one-oh-nine setting the limitation of letter C or blue tricycles from seven-hundred-sixty units to four-hundred units only. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Villia. There's an ordinance, uh, authored by Honorable Villia, uh, amending provision or a provision in ordinance number two-zero-six-dash-one-zero-nine setting the limitation of the letter C or blue tricycles from seven-hundred-sixty units to four-hundred units only. Is now considered for the first reading. Considering that, uh, needs to be, uh, conduct, a conduct of a committee meeting of this ordinance, which will be also under your, uh, committee, Honorable Villia, Committee on Transportation, you may, uh, now, uh, select a schedule for your committee meeting of these two ordinances.
Um, we can have it on, um, August twenty-sixth, Tuesday. Is there any conflict on the schedule?
Um, the other members, are you available on August twenty-sixth? Committee members are, uh, we have here, Honorable Villia, Honorable, uh, Olo is the vice chair. Honorable Deherme are also not around. Honorable Gabirino is the third member. Um, so we will just inform Honorable, um, Olo and also Honorable, uh, Deherme of the schedule on. Uh, what is the, uh, time? Honorable Villia.
The proposed time, ten o'clock in the morning.
Ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And, uh, who will be your, uh, guests?
Um, the guest will be, um, Mr. Rico Magsayo from the CMG and Engineer Tom Deherme. And, um, kalimot ko sa man.
Um, how about the president of the Blue Motorcycle?
Yeah, okay, from Committee on Transportation from Buntok, uh, Mr. Feliselda.
Okay, so the chairman, uh, the Blue will also be invited. Honorable Villia.
I'm sorry?
The chairman of the Blue Motorcycle.
Um, sorry. Mr. Honorable Feliselda from the municipality of Buntok as the chairman of the Committee of Transportation. And, uh, Rico Magsayo. And the White Association President and the officers. Because it will be the same topic, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Uh, Honorable Villia, there might be, um, be short of time because we are, uh,
Ah, holiday.
Uh, it's a holiday, holiday on Monday. Uh, there will be no enough time for the, um, letters of invitation.
I, uh,
Uh, so.
I, I, I am so, I'm sorry for that. Um, I think it will be on twenty-eighth because twenty-ninth, there's also a public hearing. So I think twenty-eighth will be the ideal.
Okay.
Date.
Twenty-eighth on the same time?
Yes.
Uh, ten o'clock in the morning. Okay. Okay, uh, this will be transferred to August twenty-eighth to make time for the secretariat to send communication to the, uh, guests. Kindly just give the, the names or the list of the guests to be invited to our, uh, SB secretary.
Well noted, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Later on, Honorable. Thank you. Okay. And, uh, okay, these, uh, two ordinances will be discussed during that, uh, committee meeting, Honorable Villia, right? These two ordinances.
Yeah, um,
Yeah.
The discussion will be the two ordinances, but later on also, um, in response to the request of the municipality of Buntok. Um, during my committee report for today's business, I will also be inviting the White, uh, the White Association, so it will be in one time. Because it will be the same people, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable, uh, Villia. So we're through with the ordinances, uh, yes, Honorable Atwill is recognized?
Considering, Mr. Chair, that this ordinance number twenty-dash-one-six-five is an ordinance entitled amending municipal ordinance provisions setting loading and unloading for trucks carrying three tons above. May I ask the Honorable Committee Chair, Mr. Chairman, that we would like Siguro invite the business sector carrying high load, three tons above because we do not have the guest from the business sector that he or she is carrying three tons above their loads of trucks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Honorable Villia, maybe Honorable Atwill, uh, meant to say that, uh, there could, you could separate the, uh, discussion considering the, the bulk of the, the topic that you may have on that day, on twenty-eighth. Because you have, uh, different, uh, personalities to be invited on the first ordinance. And the second would be the, the list of the businessmen who are, might be affected or should be informed of this, uh, second ordinance regarding the loading and unloading. So maybe we can, uh, or you may, as I suggest, that you just, uh, make a separate, uh, uh, committee meeting on these two ordinances.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Um, yeah, I am very much flexible to, to divide the, the committee hearing on this matter. So we will have it on twenty, twenty-eighth for the first ordinance, which is, um, twenty-twenty-dash-one-six-five. It will be on, uh, August twenty-eighth. And, uh, the other one will be on, um, I've, no. September one, Monday. So we will have enough time to deliver the notices. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, you will just, uh, get the list from the people who are, who are, who, uh, whose, uh, businesses are also involved in the trucking business so that they might be invited.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Villia. So just give the, uh, schedules to the, uh, uh, SB secretary uh, for these two ordinances of Honorable Villia. Okay? So we'll, uh, thank you, Honorable Atwill, for your, uh, observation. The next would be the, uh, resolutions. Uh, we will, uh, cater now the resolutions. Of the first, uh, five. Uh, number one is a five executive agenda from the office of the Municipal Mayor. We have here the letter from the office of the Municipal Mayor. This is August twenty, dated August twenty, twenty-twenty-five. The Honorable Presiding Officer through the Honorable Sanggulang Bayan Members of Sugod Southern Lady. In closer with please find executive agenda certified as urgent measure for your honor's favorable action to it. For number one, we have a passage of a resolution requesting the National Historical Commission of the Philippines, or NHCP, for permission and guidance in connection with the sproussying or sprousing. What is this? Sprousing up of the Municipal Plaza of Sugod Southern Lady, including the replacement of the existing statue of Dr. Jose Peral with a bust in a pedestal in accordance with existing laws and heritage preservation guidelines. May I ask somebody for, Honorable Gabirino, for the passes of this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to pass a resolution requesting the National Historical Commission of the Philippines for permission and guidance in connection with the sprousing up of the Municipal Plaza of Sugod Southern Lady, including the replacement of the existing statue of Dr. Jose Peral with a bust in a pedestal in accordance with existing laws and heritage preservation guidelines. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The, uh, thank you, Honorable Gabirino. There's a motion of Honorable Gabirino requesting the NHCP for permission and guidance in connection. This is for the Municipal Plaza of Sugod Southern Lady. Anybody to second the said motion? The motion is, uh, unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. Second is a passage of a resolution informing all stall holders, the vendors, likewise the Davao Metro Bus Operator and other private entities of the impending construction of the Sugod Fish Port and directing them to vacate the area upon the commencement of the contractors' mobilization. This is under, uh, infrastract- fras- uh, infrastructure of the Honorable Olo. And who is the vice chair of Honorable Olo under Enfra? Honorable Casil?
You're chairman of the infrastructure, Mr. Chair.
Uh, very sorry, Honorable Gabirino. I was used to Honorable Olo being the chairman of the infrastructure. Honorable Olo, uh, Gabirino, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to pass a resolution informing all stall holder, holders, vendors, the Davao Metro Bus Operator and other private entities of the impending construction of the Sugod Fish Port and directing them to vacate the area upon the commencement of the contractors' mobilization. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Gabirino, the chair on, uh, infrastructure. There's a motion. Anybody to second the motion? The motion is, uh, again unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. Number third, uh, number three is a passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of the catering service tender during the kalusugan sa tanan medical mission at barangay Mac of Sugod last August eighth, twenty-twenty-five in the total amount of thirty-one thousand pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOE of the Mayor's Office. We request, uh, who is the vice chair of, uh, Health? Because the chair is not around. Honorable Villia is recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of catering service tender during the kalusugan sa tanan medical mission at barangay Mac Sugod Southern Lady on August eighth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of thirty-one thousand pesos chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the Mayor's Office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Villia. There's a motion of, you've heard the motion of the Honorable, uh, Chrisna Villia. Anybody to second the motion? The motion is, uh, unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. Number four is a passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of snacks tender during the preparation of the evacuation center for the East GLG Regional Assessment last August twelfth, twen- and thirteen. Twenty-two-five in the amount of six thousand pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOE of the Mayor's Office. Honorable Paranas, please. Uh, this will be under the Committee on of the Honorable, uh, sorry, Honorable Finar. The chair of Committee on Disaster. Honorable Finar?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I hope to pass a resolution authorizing payment of snacks tender during the preparation of the evacuation center for the East GLG Regional Assessment on August twelfth and thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of six thousand pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the Mayor's Office. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Finar. There's a motion. Anybody to second the motion? Uh, again, the motion is unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. Number five is a passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of snacks tender during the kalusugan sa tanan medical mission at barangay Tampung Sugod Southern Lady in August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of fifteen thousand pesos chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOE of the Mayor's Office. Uh, members of the Committee on Health? Okay, Honorable Paranas, uh, since he's also a member, thank.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of snacks tender during the kalusugan sa tanan medical mission at barangay Tampung Sugod Southern Lady on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of fifteen thousand chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the Mayor's Office.
There's a motion of the Honorable Paranas. Anybody to second the motion? Seconded, uh, by all the members present, unanimously, the motion is served by carried and approved. Thank, thank you. Thank, thank you, Honorable Paranas. We have additional executive agenda certified as urgent from the office of the municipal mayor. This is for the passage of a resolution requesting Edgar B. Tabacón, the DPWH Regional Director of Region Eight, for the issuance of a certificate that the municipality of Sugod has the capability to undertake infrastructure projects from the Department of Budget and Management, DBM, and the Office of the Civil Defense. Honorable, again, Honorable Gabino? Our chair on Enfra, please for additional agenda. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to pass a resolution requesting Edgar B. Tabacón of DPWH Regional Director, Region Eight, for the assistance of a certificate that the municipality of Sugod has the capability to undertake infrastructure projects from the Department of Budget and Management and the Office of Civil Defense. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Gabino or Chair on Enfra. Anybody to second the motion, Honorable Gabino? The motion is seconded by Honorable Satwill, uh, unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. Then we have another executive agenda. Uh, this is for a passage of a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Purok Dos, Purok Tres, and Purok Quatro barangay Zone Five Sugod Southern Lake through Mr. Apulo Supangan, the Purok Dos President for their cultural activities in the amount of thirty five thousand pesos, chargeable against socio-cultural activities budget under the MOE of the mayor's office. Our, um, committee, uh, no, um. Okay, Honorable Paranas, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Purok Dos, Purok Tres, and Purok Quatro barangay Zone Five Sugod Southern Lake through Mr. Apulo Supangan, Purok Dos President for their cultural activities in the amount of thirty five thousand, chargeable against socio-cultural activities budget under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Paranas. There's some motion, anybody to second the motion? The motion is, uh, seconded by Honorable Satwill, Villia, Finlar, and Lorimia, and also Honorable Casil Senior. Questions, clarification, objection, there's none. The motion is served by carried and approved. We're through the, we're through with the executive agenda from the office of the municipal mayor. We will now cater the air mark resolutions during the privilege hour. We have resolution. Uh, one resolution from, first in the list is Honorable Gabino. You have one resolution.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this resolution is for financial assistance endorsed by the office of the mayor, Mr. Chairman. I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Ber Nadita and Aparejo o barangay Zone Two Sugod Southern Lake in the amount of ten thousand pesos for medication of her daughter, chargeable against donation under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Gabino. There is a motion of the Honorable Gabino. Anybody to second the said motion? The motion seconded by, unanimously seconded by all the members present into the session. The motion is served by carried and approved. And next, uh, in the list is, uh, you have air mark one resolution, Honorable Villia. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to pass a resolution allocating the amount of thirty nine thousand six hundred forty for the purchase of one desktop unit for STMG office, chargeable against peace and order budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, where is the charging on that, uh?
It's an order.
It's an order budget?
Yes.
Uh, from the STMG? Okay. Um, there's a motion of Honorable Villia. Anybody to second the said motion? Seconded by Honorable Gabino and Katwil, and likewise Honorable Finlar. Questions? Question, Honorable Paranas?
Honorable Chairman, may I know if the o- office of the Peace and Order and Public Safety or the PNP has already, um, um, provided the details of that, um, um, because the budget, Honorable Chairman, will be charged to the peace and order budget. So I think if it is not an executive agenda, Honorable Chairman, there's also a need that the PNP or the Chief of Police has the knowledge of the, um, charging of that, uh, certain resolution, Honorable Chairman.
Uh, yes, uh, any reply, Honorable Villia?
Sir Chair, uh, this was referred to me from the office of the municipal mayor, Mr. Chair. It's already approved from Honorable Mayor. And it was being instructed by the municipal budget officer to take from the peace and order.
Uh, so we are clear now, no? So this, uh, uh, this request is already approved from the offices of the mayor and the budget?
Chairman?
Uh, Honorable Paranas?
I, I would like to support the resolution, Honorable Chairman. Include me in the sec- in the secondary of the motion.
Uh, please include, uh, Secretariat, the, uh, Honorable Paranas also, and also Solerima. So unanimously seconded by all the members present, the motion of Honorable Villia is served by carried and approved. Thank you, Honorable Villia. We have, Honorable Paranas, you have air mark two resolutions.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Honorable Chairman, this resolution is about the problem or the issue arise from the barangay San Miguel. Uh, if we remembered, there was an incident because of the sand and gravel, um, that were in the, scattered in the road nearby barangay San Miguel. So this resolution, Honorable Chairman, will be addressed to the Minro for an investigation and the other concerned agencies of this LGU. Yes, Honorable Chairman. So I move to pass a resolution requesting the Office of the Municipal Environment and Natural Resources to investigate the incident happened in, along the barangay San Miguel because of the, um, scattered sand and gravel in the road between barangay San Miguel and Subangdako. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Can you cite the, the date of that, uh, date of that incident? Uh.
Uh, I am waiting, Honorable Chairman, of the communication from the barangay officials, but still I do not receive any communication. So I think, Honorable Chairman, it is now the, the job of the Minro to, during the investigation, to, to know the date and the incidents happen with that scattered sand and gravel, Honorable Chairman.
Uh, Honorable Atwill, who's the former barangay chairman of San Miguel? Honorable Atwill?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Last August twenty one, Mr. Chair, I was able to secure a certification from Office of the Punong barangay of barangay San Miguel, stated goes like this. "Atong August one thousand twenty five, ad longa birne, samay alas dosi kwartey dosa, ang takla sapon kapin ukolang, si Amalia Salbarbisnar nagpayo sa barangay Santa Cruz, Sugod Southern Lake. Sa wadam mga pangitabo, na wadano kontrol siyang motor, tongod kay daghang, ug mga balas, ang kalsada. Kami resulta pakagaskas siyang motor, ug pakabali, sa bukong-bukong, kine ne tabo sama Purok Dos barangay San Miguel Sugod Southern Lake." So according to the barangay chairman, Mr. Chair, kanak nga mga balas, around day na mga twel kay kine si Miss Amalia Salbarbisnar, nag sunod sa mao sakinan. But sad to say, according to the barangay chairman, wala, she did, she did not able to see the plate number of a certain dump truck. So, yah, as the barangay chairman, ako siyagan, nga, there was a CCTV installed in our barangay. So sad to say, according to the barangay chairman, the one CCTV camera installed near the Sugod Kakbit Arena, as of that moment, was, uh, broken. Due to the installer of mga wifi nga mga technician, gikat ang linya sa wire. So karang atay maka ro, ilap ang gire restore. Mga today or tomorrow, able na ang CCTV. Pero sad to say, di na siya kapodo, sa, karang CCTV potage kay, na time nga natagak ang balas, naguba ang ilang camera dyan na pita. Yara is certification exhibit, Mr. Chair.
So, uh, we will get the copy of that document, Honorable Atwill? Honorable Paranas?
I have already given the copy of that certification, Honorable Chairman, in support with my, for my resolution.
Okay, at any rate, it is the job of the, uh, Sangunang Bayan to, uh, request our, uh, Minro to conduct an investigation. So it's up to them if they can find out the, the plate number and the owner of that, uh, dump, dump tag, the cause, the accident. So there's some motion of, Honorable, formal motion, Honorable Paranas, requesting the, uh, Office of the Municipal Environment and Natural Resources of Sugod, ID Sugod Southern Lake to conduct, uh, thorough investigation of the incident that happened at barangay San Miguel. Last, uh, what date was that? August one twenty twenty five at around twelve forty two in the afternoon. It's caused, um, the vehicular accident uh, due to the, um, scattered, um, sand and gravel at the national highway at barangay San Miguel. So there's a motion, anybody to second the motion? Uh, motion is seconded by, uh, unanimously seconded by all the members, uh, present. The motion is served by approved. Yes?
An additional, Honorable Chairman, I just would like to add also, not only one incident happened, but, uh, I think three vehicular accidents, Honorable Chairman. And the first one, uh, it caused a teacher to break his, her leg because of that scattered sand and gravel due to the negligence of those owner of that, an operator of that dump truck, Honorable Chairman. And for that, Honorable Chairman, a follow-up, a follow-up, uh, resolution also to be addressed to the provincial, uh, level, Honorable Chairman, provincial government to also, uh, look into that, um, case, Honorable Chairman. Because I think the, the, um, the permits of those operators of the sand and gravel, Honorable Chairman, is issued by the provincial government, I think, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, it could be done, Honorable Paranas, but I think, uh, it is might, might better if we will, uh, conduct first, the Minro will conduct first investigation. This will be, the minutes will be given to the provincial offices, uh, concerned.
And Honorable Chairman, I also, I also suggest for the record, Honorable Chairman, that this representation would like to know what will happen, the, the thorough investigation, what will be the, the, um, the findings and the recommendation of this, uh, incident or issue or, uh, problem of that barangay, Honorable Chairman.
We will include in the, the words of the resolution uh, that the Minro, uh, the Minro will, um, yeah, give us the findings, uh, to the Sangunang Bayan of this, uh, incident. Because, uh, there is, uh, existing ordinance under the traffic, uh, under the, uh, traffic code of Sugod that, uh, the, um, these owners of, uh, these, uh, dump trucks who are, were, was engaged in the transportation of the sand and gravel uh, must have, uh, the cover of the, at the top of their trucks. So I think that is, uh, I think that's, that caused the violation, the rat, because if you will cover that the top of the truck, the, uh, the, this gra- this sand and gravel will not, uh, fall down. So, so, uh, we will look into that ordinance also.
Honorable Chairman, uh, I, I would like to, to post this, uh, a resolution as urgent, Honorable Chairman, so that the Minro will conduct immediately the investigation of this case, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
Honorable Paranas, and we also suggest that the, uh, the Punong barangay also of San Miguel will be invited during that investigation of the Minro. Okay, so, uh, uh, so it has been, uh, no, it's already moved and approved, uh, regarding this, um, investigation to be conducted by the Minro of this municipality. Okay, so. Yeah. And yes, it will be addressed, of course, through the office of the municipal mayor, considering that Minro is under the office of the mayor. Through the Minro. Okay, so that's the thinner, uh, now of the, uh, yeah. Thinner now of the, um, the resolution would be, uh, requesting the Minro.
I rephrase it, Honorable Chairman.
Yes, through the office of the municipal mayor.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, and thank you to the secretary for that guidance. Um, I move to pass a resolution requesting the Honorable Mayor, Shepherd Lino Estan, to request the, um, municipal, to the Minro, to conduct a thorough investigation of the, uh, of the incident happened in barangay San Miguel due to the scattered sand and gravel from the negligence of the operators of the dump truck, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
For the correction, Honorable Paranas, we will adopt the, uh, second, uh, uh, the, the secondary, uh, earlier, we just adopt the, uh, the Sangunang Bayan members also seconded to the new, uh, let us say, the corrected term of the motion of the Honorable Paranas. Okay, so we will just, uh, we're through with the resolution of the Honorable Paranas. You still have one or that would be all? So it's still one? You have another one, Honorable Paranas? Uh, okay.
Three resolutions, Honorable Chairman. Okay, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
This second resolution, Honorable Chairman, uh, I will just first provide the background and information of this resolution. Because, um, I've been contemplating this, um, resolution, Honorable Chairman, for quite some time, but because of the election, uh, I was not able to visit the LGU of Libagon. But because of the election, uh, I was not able to visit the LGU of Libagon for the thorough study of this, uh, canang, because honorable chairman, this will also need an ordinance. So honorable chairman, I want to inform the body that this resolution will be addressed to the senators for the provision of a school bus. So, um, many students in our community face difficulties with transportation, especially from barangay Kahupian going to the town, honorable chairman, and also from barangay Mac going also to the town, because there are students that are studying in, in national high school that they cannot afford because of the high cost of fare. So this representation, honorable chairman, has been planning to, to pass and request, um, with our honorable senators. I am planning to pass a resolution to Senator Rodanti Marcoletta and to the honorable Kinzaman.
You can, you can choose among the senators, honorable Paranas.
And also, honorable chairman, the reason for this is the availability, the availability of the school bus would significantly improve the students' punctuality, reduce the number of vehicles on the road, and create a safer, more sustainable environment. So for this, honorable chairman, I move to pass a resolution, earnestly and respectfully requesting the honorable Senatoro Dante Marcoletta to provide a new mini bus to be used as a school bus to improve the transportation of our students from the remote barangays going to the Sogod National High School.
That's the formal motion, honorable Paranas. Uh, you've heard the motion, anybody to second, uh, to support the motion, anybody to second? Seconded by the honorable Gabrino, you have at will, unanimously seconded by all the members present in this august body. Now the motion is served by carried and approved.
Provide the where assess. And same tenor, honorable chairman, to the Senator Bongo also, honorable chairman. Thank you, honorable chairman.
There's, uh, there's a motion, honorable Paranas, of the same tenor, now addressed to the honorable, uh, what is the full name of Senator Bongo? Uh, just make, uh, uh, ma, uh, just make the resolution and, uh, please, uh, indicate the name of, the full name of Senator Bongo. So there's a most, uh, second motion, honorable Paranas, uh, anybody to second the motion? Uh, this motion is, uh, um, seconded by honorable Twel, Villia. Unanimously, how about honorable Casil? Okay, okay, unanimously seconded by the honorable Casil, uh, all the members of this august body. The motion is served by carried and approved. I remember it's Christopher Lawrence, uh, go. So that's the full name of honorable, uh, Bongo. Okay, thank you, honorable Paranas, you still have one or you only have two? Only, I think, two? Okay, discussion on the other matters.
No, honorable chairman, from the chair, if, uh, who is the?
So, uh, we will, you will pass the resolution during the other matters, okay? I just make a research on the, who is the committee on education chair? Okay, so, um, we will just pass the resolution, uh, later on, honorable Paranas, under the, uh, their, think other matters. Uh, after, uh, we will research the chairman, the committee on education, and the senate. Okay, so we're through with honorable Paranas. Uh, we have, uh, you have one discussion, later on, we have, honorable Casil, you have one resolution?
Thank you, mister chairman, I have heard, uh, letter from the Office of Municipal Budget, uh, officially, uh, Supreme Department Budget of barangay San Miguel. As I peruse the, uh, papers, mister chairman, there's a signature appear here, uh, Pulung barangay and barangay secretary, autoserer. He is proposing or review the supplement budget of barangaysan Miguel. Uh, it is done by the Office of the Budget Officer in person of Municipal Budget Official, Joseph Antirante. So at this junction, mister chairman, I move to pass our resolution approving the supplemental budget of, declaring the supplemental budget of number one, budget year 2025 of that barangay embodied the provision ordinance number one, series of 2025, duly approved August 6, 2025, barangay as submitted on August 22, 2025, and review by this office moving of operation in the amount of 234,000 pesos only. Shows substantial compliance with the provision of Local Government Code of 1991 and its implementing rules and regulations. Thank you, mister chairman. Barangay San Miguel? Oh, 234,000 pesos.
There is a motion, honorable Casil, uh, declaring the, uh, budget, uh, barangay? What barangay is that? barangaysan, barangaysan Miguel of Sogod Southern Lake in the amount of 234,000 pesos operative in its entirety. There is a motion, anybody to second the motion? The motion seconded by the honorable, uh, Lorimia and final honorable Gabrino also seconded. Um, questions, clarification, objection, there's none, the motion is served by, uh, carried. We'll have a short recess to take our snack. Short recess for five minutes. And once again, session resumed. We will, uh, have the resolution of the honorable Paranas in continuation of the resolution he had passed, uh, a while ago.
Okay, thank you, honorable chairman. I move to pass a resolution, earnestly and respectfully requesting the honorable Bam Aquino, uh, to provide a new mini bus to be used as a school bus to improve the transportation of the municipality of Sogod Southern Lake.
There is a motion, a proper motion, honorable Paranas, anybody to second said motion? Motion is seconded by, uh, unanimously seconded, how about honorable Casil? Unanimously seconded by all the members present, the motion is served by carried. We're through.
Honorable chairman, if it, sakto ra ba nga, eto i-include sa atong resolution ang, uh, informing the honorable senators that that resolution will be supported by an ordinance? Will be man, yes, will be. Okay, thank you, honorable chairman.
Uh, you may include that in your where assess, honorable Paranas. We have, we're through with the earmarked resolutions during the privileges hour. In the order of business, we have, uh, number two, under resolutions, we have information from the Sanggulang Panalawigan, this is SB Resolution Number 574, series of 2025. A resolution approving ordinance number 2025, that's 340, Sanggulang Bayan, municipality of Sogod Southern Lake. An ordinance updating the gender and development or guide code of the municipality of Sogod Southern Lake. So this is, uh, just an information from the Office of the Sanggulang Panalawigan. Later see, we have no petition, uh, communication. We have already referred the communication of the application of accreditation to the proper committee earlier. Unassigned business, we have none. Number 16 in the order of business is the committee report. The committee report is a report from the Transportation Committee. This is, uh, meet, uh, the committee meeting was held last July 29, 2025 at the SB Session Hall to discuss the traffic situation along Osmania Street and in the vicinity of the Sogod Integrated Public Market, especially between 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The honorable Villia will deliver the report.
Thank you, mister chair, um, transportation. Thank you, miss, uh, mister chair, thank you very much. Considering, mister chair, that all members already have the copy of the previous minutes from the last committee hearing, I am open for any questions or any clarifications. Thank you. Chairman?
Yes, honorable.
May, may I request the chairman on the committee on transportation to just read the title of the committee and the topic, honorable chairman?
Okay. Um, Transportation Committee Report on the Committee Meeting Held on July 29, 2025 at the SB Session Hall to Discuss the Traffic Situation Along Osmania Street and in the vicinity of Sogod Integrated Public Market, especially between 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The congested traffic condition along Osmania Highways, street within the vicinity of the Sogod Integrated Public Market and the church area has called the attention of the SB Council. Another concern is the absence of the parking area for the motorcycles, of boarders, and lastly, the sharing of the generated penalties and the violations of certain provisions of the traffic ordinances where the task force are not included. These issues were referred to the Committee on Transportation Chairman who scheduled this committee hearing. The committee meeting was called to order at 11:15 AM by the presiding officer. Honorable Krishna Villanacorum was declared considering the presence of the majority of the members of the committee. During the course of the meeting, the concerns and issues were brought out corresponding the recommendation for its resolution. And considering that all the members, um, has the copy and the committee report was emailed days ago, um, I will just say to that, there's the final recommendation was to amend some ordinances. And if there will be any clarifications or questions, I will be ready to answer. Thank you, mister chair.
Okay, um, many years. Okay, so I think, uh, you are, you have already read the findings and recommendations of the committee? Uh, any questions to, uh, the report? I think you have copy emailed.
I have a question, honorable chairman. Uh, did the STMG attendance was majority, um, honorable Villia?
Uh, only. Yes, mister, mister chair, um, during the meeting, the, the communication was sent to the STMG head, Mr. Rico Magsayo on the task force head, Mr. Jovi Arberico. Both of them were present on the said meeting.
Thank you, honorable chairman.
We will, uh, look at the, uh, ma, can the, the recommendations, ma? Um, okay. Uh, okay, the scheduling of the goods, uh, which contributed to traffic congestion. So there is now the time from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, then resume at 7:00 PM. Um, with regards to the boarding houses, they will have to provide parking areas for the motorcycles of their boarders. Okay, and there is a recommendation that there would be an approval from the building official if there is no parking area provided by the owners of the boarding houses. Okay, and then number, okay, number four is, uh, task force assigned to manage are not included in the sharing of funds. And there is a recommendation to amend the traffic ordinance to include the task force in the sharing of the penalties generated. And also, they have to, we have to provide budget for the signage that is of standard design and respectable. Laundry business, sir, because the ball parking. Okay, number nine? Uh, number, only for, okay, so any questions from the report of honorable Villia? Still have one, honorable Paranas?
Honorable chairman, the increase of from, from, uh, the gasoline ba, honorable chairman? From 5 liters to 15. The charging of that augmentation, honorable chairman, will be coming from what, uh, budget?
Mister chair?
Honorable Villia, please.
Yeah, regarding the 15 liter, 15 liters additional budget for the, um, STMG will be shouldered by the Office of the Municipal Vice Mayor as we agreed verbatim. Thank you, mister chair.
With regards to that, we will also, I will also talk with the, um, Municipal Budget Officer. If he can, uh, provide, um, for 15 liters per week, no, if you will allotment. We will just consider that, uh, I'll talk to the budget officer. Yes? Yes.
It's reasonable, honorable Chairman, because five liters really cannot suffice the one week con- con- uh, one week
Consumption.
Consumption of this vehicle for the COAN, STMG. Maunang limited ra ang ilang pag, pagpatrol kay, ang ag, ihian po nila ng COAN. So tingali, tan aon na, tu na, kay sakto man dud po ng fifteen liters on jaa sa na, the party charge. Na kay po ndo deha sa imong pisina pa. Ah, sa messengers, oh, bitaw, di na, usakon man na. Ato sa budget, okay. Thank you, honorable Chairman.
We will ask the Budget Officer, because we have, we have to charge the fuel from the certain account on the fuel consumption of the municipality. Kaya nga tu po, na mas messenger, natuhi hatagot, ilis sa pisina sa Vice Mayor. Kaya na ilang mga motors, motorcycle. Akong gignan nga, oo, akong tagaan sila, kailang consumption. So other than that, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask if the messengers can also give additional one, kailang gasoline, fuel? Increase, other increase? For the messengers only, Mr. Chairman?
Uh... Actually, yes, um... Sa messenger, kaya rin na to sa pisina, na to na, matagaan. But with regards to the STMG, mura, dilin na kaya, kay dun na may mga lakaw ang messenger nga kinalan sila, bitaw, tanan ang mang lakaw dud, sa ilang taxi, taxi motorcycle. So I think it's not enough if you will add another burden from the STMG kay uh, nagagahan ang fifteen liters good, uh, a week. So I will personally talk to ma'am Gigi kung uh, mapunan ba ang sa STMG nga fuel consumption nila for fifteen liters. But not with the Vice Mayor's office. Anyway, the, the recommendation is we have to evaluate the fifteen liters. Uh, kung sakto na siya, then kaya nagkontrolan na is, uh, namantay consumption every every offices dud na siya. I think ang sa consumption sa STMG is not, na sila probably enough dud ang ilang COAN. Kay ilang gihatag nga, bila na, five liters lang dud, no, gamayera ang ilang COAN. Oh, per week pa dud na siya. So gamayera dud kay, sa mga kasamahan na siya nga, hihatag. So I will, I will ask ma'am Gigi, Joseph Penterante, this next week. Just, I think have to remind our secretary at uh, arundiko ka, makalimot sa akong pag, pakinga, sorry, ni ma'am Gigi, ala. Okay, so other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Casil?
Karoon kay, for the budget hearing na matagaron, so we will increase the budget of the fuel. So, so that we can suffice the needs of the team yet, and the messengers, Mr. Chairman. We'll additional, additional budget they propose, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, noted, honorable Casil. So any other questions? If none, may I ask the reporter, honorable Villia, for adoption approval of the minutes?
I would like to move for the adoption and approval of the previous minutes of Committee of Transportation, honorable Chair. Thank you.
There is a motion, honorable Villia, for adoption approval of the minutes of the committee report of the Committee on Transportation, held last July 29, 2025. Anybody to second the said motion? Motion is unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by approve. Any action on this, honorable Villia, particularly the the boarding houses that because in number three, one of the, one of the requirements for the boarding houses owners is to have to provide for the parking areas and if they will not be able to provide that, they will not be issued a billing, billing permit. So I think we have to pass a resolution requiring the OBO that the conditions, one of the conditions that should answer the billing permit is for the provision of a parking permit. Okay, so I think we have, I think, honorable Villia, you just consult the OBO. What are the, what are the existing requirements now? So that you could, you can amend an ordinance pertaining to the requirements of a parking area. If they don't have any parking area, they will not be issued a billing permit, so just make, maybe a consultation with the Office of the Building Official. Yes, so that they could, you could insert an amendments of the ordinance among the requirements for the billing permit on boarding houses. Okay, so that's the assignment of honorable Villia. Assignment. And the other are already known to the STMG, no? Ang mga schedule, nakahiba na naman sila, eh, schedule sa loading and loading.
Yes.
Honorable Villia?
Um... There is a pending for the findings on section, number four, for the amendment of the present traffic ordinance of the task force in the sharing of penalties. I will just get back to this one, because I need to, to review the the existing ordinance about this sharing for the penalties. So that will be pending, and next week I will be presenting to you the COAN, kailangan provisions kung onsa ang ay alidan and itang tangon.
Yeah, alright, we will just, you just have to report to the body regarding the certain provision of that ordinance.
Yes.
That will include of the task force for the sharing of the generated, uh... In, I mean, we have, because they will, they are not included.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chair, there is an existing resolution for that task force to, to be allowed to receive also for the incentives, but it was not honored by the Budget Officer. So, and that resolution will be expiring in one year time. So during the discussion, with through the wisdom of honorable Olo, niana siya na, kailangan na siya i-amend para isulod na lang sila dito sa ordinance sa, dilin na siya sa resolution. So I will be checking out on that matter, then I'll get back to that COAN point.
Okay, kaya that will be in the next regular session. Thank you, honorable Villia, for the recommendations and the report. And the next report would be another committee report of, again, for the Transportation Committee. This was held on August 4, 2025, to treat the Buntok Resolution. The, this is Municipality of Buntok Resolution Number 234 Series of 2025, requesting the Honorable Sheriff Lino Stan and the Sangguyang Bayan of Sugod Southern Lake to reconsider and allow the good standing operators with roadworthy motorized tricycle from Buntok Southern Lake to renew their franchise. You may have your report, honorable Villia.
Thank you.
It's me, honorable Chairman.
Just before that, honorable Paranas?
The previous...
Uh, that's number... Actually, the, I think I read the provision of that ordinance that part of the part of the money that is from the penalties taken from those violators, that, that money will be used in the um, utilization for the signage. And aside from the incentives, that money will be used for the, for the signage. But what is being tackled therein is provide budget for the signage that is of standard design and respect, respectable, I think. Uh, from the Office of the Treasurer. Yeah, Office of the Treasurer. Uh, this is, aside from the incentives, out of the generated penalties from the violators, this will be used in the purchase of these signage for traffic. And the other, the remaining would, would be, this will be divided the incentives for the task force and also from the STMG traffic. It's, I think, maybe ask honorable Villia, who was present.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the budget for the design, as per Mr. Rico Magsayo, they are getting from the executive. Yes, thank you.
If that's so, honorable Chairman, I think the honorable Villia should also pass a resolution as action of that, for that recommendation, honorable Chairman.
We will, we will ask our, we will ask the Budget Officer before we will make a resolution on that, honorable Paranas. Uh, because the, as I have, I have, was informed that these are from the penalties from those who are violators of the traffic violations. But I may be wrong, but we will ask the Budget Officer. Then after knowing if, where are this, uh... Ah, okay. Okay, according to our secretary, the budget is from the Office of the Municipal Mayor. So there's no need to pass a resolution. Okay, so that's, oh, that's clarification from honorable Paranas. Okay, so you may have your report now, honorable Villia.
Transportation Committee Report on the meeting held on August 4, 2025, at the SB Session Hall, to treat the Buntok Resolution Number 234 S, 2025, a resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Sheriff Lino Stan, Municipal Mayor, and the Sangguyang Bayan of Sugod Southern Lake to reconsider and allow good standing operators with roadworthy motorized tricycles from Buntok Southern Lake to renew their franchise. Resolution Number 234 Series of 2025 of Buntok Sangguyang Bayan was referred to the Chairman of the Committee of Transportation for the appropriate action. A meeting was scheduled and conducted attended by the Chairman of the Committee on Transportation of Sangguyang Bayan of Buntok, honorable Gregorio Y. Felcilda. The meeting was ordered at 2:05 PM and considering the presence of the majority members of the said committee, a quorum was declared. So I believe all the members of this body received through email and hard copy regarding this committee report. If you have any clarifications or questions, I would be glad to answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so you may have a short look at the findings and recommendations before you ask the questions to honorable Villia. Anyway, honorable Villia, you may have also, uh... You may also tell us the highlights, only the highlights of this report.
Okay, during the meeting, we, we discussed the matter regarding the reconsideration of the roadworthy drivers from the Municipality of Buntok. Apparently, we ended up like, we will just treat this one once we will be done with our inventory in the numbering of the blue motorcycle potpot. And then the second thing, the second thing, and there is a suggestion that the blue drivers' potpot from Buntok will join the association of the white, white white association of, na kanin mga potpot, white-coded. Kay, they are only, they are, they have the same route, Sugod to Buntok. However, ang issue ni manggood is, ang white-coded potpot, they are requiring of 25,000 pesos as membership. So with this point, with the wisdom of honorable Olo, magpatawag na po ko, meeting inviting the white-coded na potpot from Buntok kay, currently manggood, Mr. Chair, before sila makakuha og franchise, there's a recommendation from the President of the Association. And it shouldn't be that way, kay kita dapat ang mo kontrol sa Association. Dili ang Association ang magdecide, kung kisay ilang hatagan og kailangan permit na makakuha. And one of the requirements is to pay 25,000 pesos, which is dilin na siya affordable sa mga drivers. And wala po na sa existing ordinance na to. So the final recommendation, ang, the final recommendation of this, Mr. Chair, is to have a meeting with the white-coded motorcycles with the Chairman of the Transportation sa Buntok, together with our committee members. with the Chairman of the Transportation sa Buntok together with our committee members. And then, as, excuse me, and also napasabot na to sila, no? Ngakani pagprohibit sa mga numbering sa putput, diligin na siya absolute, nga dilin na sila dawaton. Once we were done with our inventory and if there's a need to have more vehicles then ato silang dawaton. But for the time being, magfocus at the sa inventory then diha lang tamu decide once makita na to, nga napadri kailangan pa na to og more than, more vehicles dili sa atua, nga gikan sa ilaha. And then the committee chairman also agreed nga katung mga blue-coded putput sa Buntok, nga wala na'y franchise sa atua mojoin sila sa white-coded, kay siyem laman sila ug rota, Sugod Buntok lang sila. So monay for the time being solution para po dilipod sila makulban sa ilang kaldiro in town. So mona nga, for the time being lang sa, nga di, bat tamu dawat nila papilon sila sa white-coded, kay ang ilahang rota is Sugod Buntok lang. So mona ni ang problema karoon kay na may twenty-five thousand nga membership fee sa white-coded. So mona, ang final recommendation sa committee is to sit, uh, is to set a hearing again invited na ang atuang white association nga putput sa Buntok.
So this, this will be, there will be a part two of the uh, committee meeting?
Yes, Honorable Chairman, and that time ang white-coded na pod ang inbitaroon. Um, sa blue, regarding ni siya sa blue.
Blue.
Regarding ni sa blue nga putput.
Okay.
Which is nakadecide naman dyan nga dilin na tamu damu dawat nila for the time being.
Okay.
So kanang pagoffer sa white-coded, kuwan na na siya morag alternative lang na it's the prerogative of the Buntok drivers kung musunod sila. For the meantime.
There is no uh, schedule yet for the uh, committee meeting?
Um, there, I am planning on September four morning time, ten o'clock, and uh, I would like to invite um, Honorable Filiselda from Buntok, Engineer Tommy DiHarmi, Rico Magsayo, and uh, White Association President and members and the committee members of uh, Committee of Transportation.
Uh, two o'clock or ten ocl- uh, nine o'clock? Nine AM?
Ten AM.
Ten AM?
Yes.
So uh, Secretariat kindly take note of those invite, to be invited guests on September three at nine o'clock in the morning of the Honorable Villia's uh, Committee on Transportation.
September four, Mr. Chair.
September four.
Yes, because September three we have session. It is Wednesday.
September four. Thank you, Honorable Villia. Uh, move for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the, of this report?
Um, while there's no objection of the previous minutes, I would like to move for the adoption and approval of the previous minutes of committee on transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion for adoption and approval of the minutes of the report of the Committee on Transportation last August fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Anybody to second the motion, Honorable Villia? The motion is agained by Gabrielino Casil, uh, Pailnar, Loremia. And Loremia. Any questions, clarification, objection? There is none. The motion is served by Karen. Now we have uh... We have another report. This was uh... This was uh, a remark during the privilege hour. Uh, yes? Under the chairmanship of committee, Committee Chairman, Honorable, I think, DiHarmi, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yeah.
Okay.
This will be very quick because the recommendation will also is uh...
Ah, yes, yes. I saw the, I saw the recommendations. Very short. Okay, Honorable Villia, you may deliver the report.
Um, Health and Sanitation Committee Report on the meeting held on August thirteen, twenty-twenty-five Wednesday at the SB Session Hall to review the proposed municipal ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash three five seven entitled An Ordinance Establishing Regulations on the Proper Handling of Human Waste from Septic Tanks Puso Negro in the Municipality of Sugod Southern Lake. Proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three five seven was referred to the committee of, the Committee on Health and Sanitation Honorable Anna Is DiHarmi for the appropriate action. A meeting was scheduled which was called to order at two fifty-five PM. Considering the presence of the majority of the members of the committee, a quorum was declared and during the course of the meeting and um, findings were established. So I believe all the members have the soft copy of this committee report. And just for uh, information of the everybody, the, the final recommendation for this meeting is there is no need to formulate another ordinance of the same purpose. The committee members present agreed to this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Villia. So the recommendation is that there is already an existing ordinance pertaining to the uh, regulation of uh... handling of human waste from the Septic Tanks in the Municipality of Sugod. So there's no need to pass another ordinance. So any question? Uh, I believe nobody will ask. The, the, the recommendation is very simple. No need to pass another ordinance. Okay, uh, for the adoption and approval of the minutes, Honorable Villia, for this report?
I would like to move for the adoption and approval of the previous minutes on Committee on Health. Thank you.
Okay, so was, was there a motion? Okay, there is a motion, Honorable Villia, for adoption and approval of the minutes of the Committee on Health and Sanitation held just August thirteen, twenty-twenty-five. Anybody to uh, second the motion? Seconded by uh, unanimously seconded by all the members present, the motion is served by approve. So no actions uh, needed uh, since there's no need to pass another ordinance. We're through with the committee reports. For other matters? Uh, I think, Honorable Paranas, you have? No more? We'll defer, okay, the discussion, okay. No other matters? Also a remark during the privilege hour? Yes? Okay, no more? Okay, may ask? May ask somebody? This is adjournment time. Honorable Paranas? There is a motion to adjourn the regular session. Anybody to second? Seconded by Honorable Satwil and Loremia and Pailnar and Villia. It has been moved and seconded that the regular session this afternoon is served by adjourn.